Like the conversation, uh, we're seeing that's five o'clock. We'll open up the meeting with a start of the pledge, please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so since you took the time to come on in, if you could just state your name for the record.
Dean Swanson.
Ken Swanson?
Dean.
Oh, Dean Swanson. Nice to meet you, Dean. Yeah, so is this something that you're kind of familiar with then Debbie?
Yeah, he had spoken to Jen about it and we were looking at it and when I looked at the tax map it of course, we don't know if it's right or not, but where the tax map is, your property doesn't even touch that road?
It doesn't even show the road on the tax map.
It shows a lit- it does, it shows a little dotted line.
Why is it if I step over it, I walk twenty-five feet to another rock wall, in between those two rock walls is a road.
Right, it's a cart path.
No, it's a road. It it was an old road, it goes all the way down.
Well, yeah, and so do you already have like the information that I'm assuming like he has with him tonight?
No, I didn't think.
He says, I tell him the road on deed.
Okay.
That was the original old country road that ran all the way through the town and then they did the turnpike.
Right, well, that's a highway on here, cause the highway was my front yard.
Every every road according to the state is considered highway. That's what they call every road a highway.
Yeah, but Davis Village Road used to be Route one twenty-four before they put the bypass through and did dark lane.
Right, so but according to the state like Davis Village Road is still a highway.
Right.
It's just a terminology that they use, yeah, even though it's not.
And it was also still one twenty-four which was a highway. Technically it was a highway. I mean, it doesn't matter.
Semantics, it's just a word.
You mind if we take copies of those, like that paperwork?
Exactly.
Okay, alright, awesome.
I even have the book and page numbers for the old deeds.
Okay. Yep.
Where if you went back to like, um, the owner of the property now is called Sweeney. Or Swayney, I don't really know how to pronounce it. But when he bought it off of the person here, the town deeded him a right of way, but not to maintain that right of way. And the electric company goes all the way to the back of my property and maintains those telephone poles. And there's a transformer, so when I talk to them, they have the copy of that too. For the easement, for him to get to his property. That's not, when you look at the tax map, that little gray strip coming down the side of the property
Right.
is not, it that was deeded to the other people as a right of way from the town.
Right.
So the town released the same thing that I wanted to do to him, well, to them. And he bought that on the deed and it has it on the book and page numbers here.
Okay.
Can't print them out because the state went additional and they wanna charge for everything and then plus you have a membership fee.
And you have to pay the bill. Um, he said he'd made a few copies.
Stuff like that.
So, I mean, I guess we'll have to do some deep diving and find out.
Yeah, I mean.
Because I don't, according, when you look at the tax maps, that
They're never accurate.
that little piece of road. Copy, I'll look. Oh, um, I guess.
Yeah.
If you look at that. It it doesn't look like your property even, that road is near your property.
Oh, yeah, it is. Well, if you look at my property, it's not even shaped like that. You know, that's
Yeah.
You know, that's the whole thing. I mean, the tax map is kind of just, whatever, you know, you're shot in the dock right there, you know?
Yep.
So.
Yeah, the online ones aren't aren't accurate, so, yeah.
Not, I mean, they've made it up for years and years, duplicated, cause towns aren't gonna fix them, you need to go out there and change it.
I tried. A few times.
Yeah, so the best thing we can do is take all the information that you have and then they'll continue to look into it and if it's possible, we would like to to make it happen for you, you know, you know, find the way to get it done.
Right. Yeah, cause like I said, I'm not gonna do anything with it afterwards, it's just, I can hook onto that transformer. The power company said they could just run one pole, be done with it. They gotta go down there anyhow, so now basically instead of pulling it to his property and just turn around, they could just go down that road and go back up.
Yeah.
You know, um, and I'll even seal the rock wall back up after, I think it lasts.
Did you get a bu- building permit to build the garage?
To do what? Build a house? I could go anywhere on my property, I got nine acres.
I thought you were building a garage, that's why you want access.
Yeah, but you gotta start with foundation, so I gotta see if I got a concrete truck somewhere. I can move it right up to like the road. But then that's just gonna ruin any easement up to the back later on, it's gonna be wanted subdivided.
And that's kind of where I was going with, you know, starting with Susan in the building department.
Right. Yeah.
Uh, cause it like if you came in to get the building permit, some of this background stuff would have started, alrighty to make sure, cause
Well, that's what I was trying to do is, well, before I even situate, I mean, a building, you wanna be able to get to it, so.
Yep.
But you.
That's where I kind of started, was finding out a way to get to it.
Yep, absolutely.
You know?
So you need to make sure that where you're gonna put this building is gonna meet all the setbacks and all that stuff, so that would make.
Down construction.
Right, no, I'm just saying, like you.
Well, that's why I'm saying is I could put it over on the other one too, and that's just, I mean, I'm looking at saving money here, not building the road.
Right.
But that will ruin three other possible lots later on down the road.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I think so.
You know, I'm looking at coffee.
Right.
Because technically even this house, this building here could be subdivided out into a parcel later on down the road. I have no desire to do it.
Right, if you wanted to sell down, yeah, I hear.
I mean, I could sell to a contractor's dream, here's a skeleton of a house.
Right.
You know, because it would be a house. But I'm gonna use it as a garage. I'm just gonna leave empty inside.
Right. So, my suggestion would be to draw up a plan of where you want it to be. And like a b- a building permit, to make sure you can get a building permit for where you wanna do it before you.
I have, I can do it anywhere, uh, I I just wanna know if I can get a truck there and then I'd go through all this work, you know, if it's not doable getting this road open, I'll just put it over there.
Yep.
You know, it it's kind of, doesn't, but way to run down the road is just gonna ruin three other lots.
So I guess the application for a building permit is more to get your information, get some of these details uh, from you, get a drawing of where you wanna situate the building and then the building inspector can start taking a look at the feasibility of it.
Yeah.
So that's, the application just helps us with contact information and uh, understanding what your intent is, cause just because you filled out the application doesn't mean that it's gonna be approved necessarily. Um, so then that's where you start looking into things.
Yeah, and what would be the denial of a a garage?
Not me.
They'll just act side to the backside like that, or like what the challenges are, or what you're gonna need to do in order to, you know, cut in that temporary road or access point.
Right, so we don't, we don't know if we could get the approval, so I gotta waste all this time and effort to find out if I can.
No, you don't, you don't, like you're here now, you're spending quality time with us, so.
Yeah, and that's why I'm trying to narrow it down, so I don't have to keep coming back to these.
Yep.
It should be a cut and drag.
So.
I mean, he's not gonna find the information out because I've already tried finding these things out and they've sent me to every of his departments.
So what I was, I'm not gonna like ask to, you know, make a decision of this board tonight on this?
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, so we're just taking the information in, it's the same process.
Yeah.
And then I gotta hand it off to, and probably a few people like to really look at where it should be and make sure that it can be done, if it can be done, um, and how we can do it.
Right, so. So if I just draw an X on the paper on where I want it.
Yep.
That would be, that way we can just go through it all instead of filling up the paperwork here.
That'd help. Sure.
Because if that one gets squashed, then I have to do it all over again for the next one, because I relocated it to the other, to the other side of the property.
Yep.
And then, you see what I'm saying? I'm just trying to narrow it down.
Yep.
So, I wouldn't draw an X, I would make the box how big it is, how far it is away from the property line.
Do you have a, do you wanna do that for us now, so we have it?
Yeah, I can do that right now.
Okay.
Because we can do thirty feet or forty feet.
Um. So you'd be looking to come off a dark lane road?
No, actually.
Or Davis Village, I mean?
This is the easement that I was talking about to the house. Check, here's the house. This is our Sweeney's house. There's a telephone pole here which goes to the road. I just wanna take a telephone pole down here and it would be approximately right here thirty by sixty by sixty, and then I could come in through here with the concrete trucks. Pull this, close the wall back up.
How are you gonna get to the garage from your driveway?
Oh, I can drive through it, yeah, but it's, you know, it's like seven hundred feet back here.
Mm-hmm.
That's a big, that's like a lot of money to spend for a concrete truck to get out there. So that's, afterwards I could just come right through here, my trucks will make it, no problem. They're light enough, but when the concrete truck's huge.
So this is not your property?
No, this is the other side of the road.
So it's coming up here, I think, to, right, up this edge?
Right, yeah, it would be coming up through here. And right here is the other side of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
He has a deed to easement.
That's Alan Soines.
Right, yeah, he's got a deed to easement through it.
So it would be coming off of, it would be coming off of here, right?
Yeah, you'd have to get permission. Yeah.
Right, through that, his, basically it's like his dr- what he's using as his driveway now, because his rock, the rock wall continued over to here. He's got a little building here on the corner, which isn't by the easement, isn't by any code.
So that's why I'm saying you would have to get permission from the Soines to use that
To. Why?
to get, because that's not your property, that's their property.
And it's not the town's property.
It's not town property.
No, their property stopped here, at this rock wall. Why would, why would?
It it may be the center of, I don't know.
The center of.
It may be the center of, which means that's fine, I could just cut down there, get the concrete truck through, either way.
But at at any rate, you're gonna be coming up, like that access point, is that their driveway?
You know?
Like, are you gonna be coming up their driveway for the initial push?
Right, that's their driveway, but yet the town still owns it.
Yeah.
They just gave them a deed to easement. Which is one of these right here.
So in general, with these types of issues, it's always good to talk to your neighbors.
Oh, yeah, he doesn't like me.
Well, that's a problem.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
I mean, we could be, I mean, we could cause more problems than he'd, I just called the fire department on last week for burning oil and tires.
So you definitely have to get his permission to use his driveway, even because
You know? And then if he says no, but technically that's not his driveway.
He has the right of way.
You still own it.
But.
So we'll look, we'll look into that, we'll look in, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying, because the, this is all maintained by the electric company.
Okay.
So, you know that if the electric company goes to here that's deeded.
Okay.
You know, they're not gonna go into a private parcel to maintain that property.
Yep. I gotcha.
So, and that's why when I talked to him last week, that's what he told me too, so.
Alright. Alright, yeah, just let us take a look at it, a little bit closer on our end.
Yeah, uh, do you know roughly how long that would take?
At least a week.
A week?
It's budget season, maybe longer.
Yeah, so probably like middle of February.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Oh, alright, yeah.
I mean, I'm not in like a great, great rush, but you know, I wanna find out kind of like, you know, hey, May time, what, yeah, we're still looking into it, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you give us a month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Um, do we have your number?
Uh, no.
Okay, wanna
write it down.
Is it right there on the back of the shirt?
Okay.
It is, no.
So I'm gonna say by February fourteenth, okay?
Oh, it's Valentine's Day.
I know.
Now I'm gonna be in trouble.
Thanks for coming in, Dean.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Who's the last four of that phone number?
Uh, one four two nine.
Okay. Thank you.
We all took notes, it's very important. Alright, so, budget. Evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
You find about two hundred thousand dollars or?
Uh, I'd actually include something that should have been, uh, removed, so.
Oh, really?
We're under, you know, no, just to get under that three point four million, three point three million, whatever we were at, but, uh, but no, that that's it.
Alright.
So we're pretty close to where we were last week. Right, we were three point two, we're three point one nine right now. Debbie found that, wasn't it me?
Oh, there you go.
We did a lot of collaboration. It was quite fun.
I reckon I don't like this tool either.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's a challenge.
And I also called Anna to find out how to put the encumbrances in. I tried doing it on my own, she never called me back and she's off on Wednesdays, so.
Okay.
But we need to get it posted.
Yep. Yep, I can add those next week. Was there anything in particular that you or you two gentlemen were looking to have us focus our attention on or? Yeah?
These for your talking points for your presentation. Well, that didn't print out very well, did it? And I also added a warrant article to the synopsis. And you guys get a vote of my articles.
For tonight? Or is it next week?
Budget hearing, no?
I didn't think ahead of the budget hearing.
No?
I don't.
Oh, alright. Already, no?
Could be wrong, though, brain's a little fuzzy. Look at table number four, Heritage Commission made it to the top of the list.
It's misleading when you sort by percentage. If you went up fourteen hundred bucks, then that's two hundred and fifty percent increase.
It's not misleading, that's just the facts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can sort these any way you want, uh, you know, maybe if if you wanna do the departments, we can do the top five departments or or something like that, uh, we can provide all the data. It really depends on what you wanna share.
I do like the that that table though, number four. Now, the difference between table one and table two. Now, you've noticed something for table three to table four as well, um. It seems like there's different categories. Like table one to table two, like the wages benefits Medicare FICA isn't, is it broken out different?
Yeah, so these are the top, there's a, um, I don't know, fifteen or so categories, uh, these are the top nine.
Oh, okay, alright.
Oh, so if you do it by dollars or if you do it by percentage, it's different?
They're changing.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, is it possible to have more?
Yep.
Like, could we do them all?
I could do them all, yeah.
Alright.
All on one table, you mean?
Yeah, well, so the table, like, yeah, like.
Table one and two combined?
Not combined, it's, cause it's just a different way to, um, show it.
Oh. Oh, increased by percent, increased by dollars.
Yeah, but then if you notice, like, um, like on table one, like our number one, if we did it by category. It, uh, the wages isn't on table two.
Oh.
Because the percentage of increase, it's only the top nine.
But wh- this has both, doesn't it? Why would we need two tables when they're already included?
No, we're choosing, yeah, we, we're gonna choose one, one or the other.
Oh, one or two.
Yeah. So then when I asked, like, I noticed that there's a difference, and he said that, um, each one only gave us the top nine. So that's why it's, you know, with it being sorted by a different, um,
Either by, either by dollars or by percentage.
type of number, yeah. But we can't have it all.
The top nine change.
So I wanna, to make sure, cause I like how table two looks, but I definitely would like all of them, so that shows all of it.
I gotcha. Yep, we'll do that.
Yeah. Cause no matter what table we choose, I believe all of them should be listed.
Okay, yeah.
It'll be apples. Apples to apples, what we're seeing.
Yeah, so you'll be able to find, like, the, each category, like, it'll all be the same information. That's just how it's arranged.
Yeah, they they do definitely need to be all arranged.
Yeah.
So instead of sum of all of all other expenses, it'll list them all?
Would you like in that table for those items that you have no control over to be bolded or somehow stand out?
No.
No.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's the same, you know, it kinda goes without saying, like, the fuel, I think, aspect. And then that could lead to people thinking that we had more control over one of the other ones, when it's not that we padded anybody's budget, you know, everything's pretty tight still.
Other things, yeah.
So these two gentlemen think? So I'm thinking table two and table four, just to complete, each one complete.
Yep.
Increased by percent. I think it's important that we do um express that there are certain uh, itemizations here that we have no control.
Yep.
Such as the fuel. And if putting it in a bold, um, or italics or something like that, um.
I don't remember, when when you did the calculations in terms of those items that Alan really had no control over, it tend to come out to like everything else was about three percent of the budget of the, uh, increase.
That's what I, that's what I remember.
Yeah, it was a small percentage.
Yeah, it was, I think, if I remember correctly, one of the runs of the budget is that when we identified those items that you virtually had no control over it left of the i- increase, three percent of the increase was things that you had control over. Ninety-seven percent of the increase you had no control over.
And we'll still have that talking point.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think it needs to be stressed out on the paperwork that we just did.
So even with that example, um like the wages, uh, benefits line? Um that may be one of those bolded marks, but there was some, you know, like it's, with the health insurance aspect.
Yep, and the whole aspect.
It's not a complete truth to say that we had no control over it, right?
Right.
So.
Well, I thought we're not bolding any of them.
Yeah, that's why I don't think I wanna bold anything, cause I don't want to, um, come off as misleading as well. Not that that's what we're trying to do, but I don't want something to fall into that category and then not be thinking of that aspect and then get cal- called out on it.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think it's, but I do understand what you're saying, then, um, and Mitch, you know?
Verbally make the point.
Yeah, yeah.
I would actually be more in favor of going by dollar.
Yeah.
Well, you look like the biggest dollar amount of increases, um, percentages, they are what they are, if I look at percentages.
You just don't like the hair commission up right up at top.
I don't care. It's all, it's, it's all numbers, but, I look.
Yep.
It's not until, well, nine lines down that you see something over a hundred thousand dollars when you go by increase, percentage increase.
Yeah.
Where, when you go by
That's the total.
What's that? When you're, when you're presenting it that way.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
It just, I think, well, at least if I was coming to the hearing, I would be like, okay, so there's this much of an increase, where is all this money gonna be going? And I would look at the dollar amounts, I wouldn't look at, you know, if you look at emergency management and heritage commission, they're relatively small numbers, and it would just feel to me like
Percentage alone could be mysterious.
Yeah, whereas the dollar amount, to me, is more straightforward, but I don't.
Looks like we have a tiebreaker situation on our hands here, Lou.
I don't really have much passion in it, they're all numbers and
Whether it's numbers or percentage, percentages, um, you still have the point of there are certain parts that we don't have control over.
That's
And, um,
So, I just
You know, and if, if you can go ahead and you can explain that we had no control over the cost of fuel.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, unless you've got somebody who's, you know, really interested in this and puts a checkmark next to that or a star or something to bring it out, and then said, well, we didn't have any control over road salt. And the percentage of people out in the audience that, you know, that are actually going to take these seriously, they're looking at the, the gross numbers, but if you don't stress out which ones you don't have control over, they're not gonna remember that by loo- by looking at this.
So we have a statement at the bottom of it as well.
Yeah, they do that talking part.
Yeah.
Right.
Cause then that'll be a part of the minutes, it's gonna be a part of the packets that everybody gets and what gets posted online.
But really, Sean, I mean, I don't, you're gonna be chairing the meeting, and if you're more comfortable with either of these, it doesn't matter to me.
So, yeah.
I'm just saying, like, as a member of the audience, I would be, I would just be
No, I take that in, and that's why I was just looking for, like, on that point.
Yeah, I would be just kinda like crossing it off.
What do you guys think?
I, I go by dollars.
Your dollars?
I don't care about the percentage.
Dollars.
I agree.
Alright, so dollars it is. Alright.
So table three and one?
I could picture people in the audience saying, where's the big dollar items, and then scanning through it.
Yeah.
There's, if you give it to them by dollars, just say, well, that's the big money right there.
Alright, yeah, I just, I've been thinking about percentages so much and
I, I also don't like the two hundred and fifty percent one being at the top of the list. I know it's only
Yeah, but it is somewhat reassuring that it's, yeah.
Okay, now, instead of putting it in bold, if you just put a bullet in front of it.
Well, there's gonna be like a little two or three line statement at the bottom, items such as blah, 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 you know, our increases out of our control, um, and we have not over budgeted for that, those items, it was based off of real numbers and projections for next year.
Or you could
Or
Cause I really don't wanna single any one line out, Lou, like, with those asterisks.
Um,
Especially because it would be, it would, we'd be asking them to go in and start doing a whole much more work when they already broke it out for us in a simple blurb.
Why?
So it's, it's really not the work, but if you say, if you look at the, you know, wages, um, I can argue, you have control over that. It's painful, but you, you can control wages, you can control gasoline, limit, you know, cut down the amount, amount of driving.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Go to electric cars, that fixes the gasoline line, electric cars, that'd kill you elsewhere, but, so road salt, did we buy more, you know, I, I don't wanna go there, just, this is the best we have, I, I wouldn't call it any more different than the other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's not that they're gonna say, you know, cut down the amount of road salt.
They might.
Uh, they might, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's, that is an, at the end of the day, we could cut all the staff, but in half, right?
It's a possibility.
Yeah, you could cut it.
I guess, yeah, that's a good point, like, it's all, and all we are is trying to keep things running, like, status quo.
You could cut the bullet by, or what are two people? Right. Yeah.
I think if you could question, you know, like, you know, can't you cut, you know, reduce the salt or whatever? I think it's gonna be imperative that you're able to spell out what the consequences are. We can do that, but these are our concerns if we were to do that, this is what the consequences would be for the community.
The town would not be responsible for your car sliding into a tree.
They're not anyways.
I know.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think we, we have to assume that a lot of people, I don't know what kind of peo- how many people are gonna show up to the deliberative session, but you, we have to assume that a lot of people, if the crowd is large, there'll be a number of people who are not used to looking at numbers. And so I, you know, without, this is not meant as a criticism, but I think you have to tailor your explanations to that group that is gonna have the least ability to understand the numbers. If they can get it, then everybody else in the room will get it as well. So if you can talk, uh, simply about what the consequences are, if we don't do this, if we don't do that, that will, everybody will understand that.
Yeah.
They all understand, cause they'll understand how it affects them.
Yeah.
Three point one nine.
Mm-hmm.
That would be nice.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a whole lot better than three point two.
So you want table one, table three?
Yes, sir.
And all the categories from table one?
Yep.
Uh, keep in mind, I made up these categories, so if, uh, if you get that, you don't understand something, let me know, and I can always clarify the terminology.
Okay. And then the NAs are gonna be all
Gone.
Yeah, so the NAs are in table four, um,
Okay.
But that's just because, uh, all those departments had zero increases, so I couldn't rank it, I couldn't I, everything's automatic, and it came up and said they were all zeros, how do I rank that? And I didn't fix it, so.
Okay.
So that those departments there were, um, they really had no expense to them, or no?
No, they didn't increase at all.
Yeah.
Oh, they didn't increase at all?
Yeah.
But that still adds over to the total?
Yes, it does. Yep, hopefully go to table three sorted by dollar, everything's there.
Gotcha.
Alright.
Cool.
Well, that's a bad point, thank you for that, that'll be, it's gonna be a nice, uh, piece, like, addition to this whole thing.
Yep. So, I, do you need him to send that to you, so you can put it, like, on a slide or something?
Uh, not for next week, first, yeah, it can be a printed copy.
Oh, I keep thinking
Yeah, you're fast forwarding to
I'm fast forwarding.
Deliberative session. So we'll get through, uh, next week's public hearing, and then we'll start prepping for all the deliberative stuff.
I've not sat in on a public hearing for the budget, what actually happens, and do people show up?
Um, we essentially, um, not too many, maybe three or five, um, people, um, I like, I, yeah, historically
Historically.
Yeah, unmo- unless there's a big hot button issue, and then the room, whole place filled up, but a few years ago.
It'd be nice if people came in to be a part of that, um, part of the process, um,
Yeah.
so that we didn't wait till the polls, like, in March, it is almost too late, because the community does have, say, in this budget, before we ask them to vote on it.
Right.
Um, and I don't know if people really respect that or not, um, cause of all the time that you gentlemen put in, you know, working with departments, the time, um, Debbie's put in, the time that we put in reviewing your body of work and going through and asking, you know, the different department heads, like, if there's anything that they could do to bring their budgets down, um, it can be discouraging to hear that word, um, default, when people aren't actually taking the time to come in and get educated and be a part of the process and make suggestions on what everybody's been working on.
Yep.
Um, you know, cause if you ask me, the middle of March is way too late to just, you know, throw out an uneducated, no.
Yeah.
You know, uh, when you didn't, you chose not to speak your mind over the four months that, you know, we've worked to put this together.
Right.
Yep.
So.
Um, I was talking to a couple of people outside of work, um, and about the frustration of that nobody shows up to the budget narrowing, to the deliberative, and, you know, like, not a lot of people do, like, general public, it's all like a lot of employees that show up at the deliberative.
Yeah.
Um, and we kinda were throwing around the idea of putting it on Facebook, or maybe having a Saturday, you know, like, one hour, hey, this is what we're doing prior to the deliberative, like, what if they can't come on a Tuesday night at seven o'clock? You know what I mean? They couldn't make any votes or decisions or anything like that outside of deliberative, but at least they could have a voice and look at it and kinda be part of it.
Yeah.
If they're, uh, you know, like, people who work in Boston and leave at five o'clock, they don't get home till eight o'clock or, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Make sure we put it on Facebook, make sure we put it on Life in a Whip Switch, all of that.
Yeah.
You know, just try to get it out there, come please, your, your vote count, you know, your voice counts.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, cause after all, that's our community's budget, so.
Right, right, it's everybody's tax dollars that are going into this, and everybody should have a say in it prior to, you know?
Yep. So, hopefully we get some more people next week, fill up the room maybe, in a positive way.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't need to be attacked, like, we're always open for, uh, suggestion and
Right.
you know, doing things different ways, yeah, yeah.
Comments.
And, you know, a lot of this too, you know, there's little bits that we've incorporated, um, but from what I've heard, uh, the community by and large would like a more stable town office and feels like they would like to compensate, you know, the people that are serving them a little bit more, like, and have the same faces around, and, you know, create a good working environment, uh, for the people, you know, that are serving our community. Uh, and we, because of all of those fixed costs, we were only able to address so much of it this year.
Right.
Uh, just sprinkle a little bit in, instead of, yeah, I'd much rather be, um, standing behind an eleven percent increase that included, um, you know, more benefits and different things, you know, creative things that would help, um, not grow the town office, but just keep the people in place, um, that we rely on, uh, day to day, um, and to have, uh, better facilities, like, to take care of some of the other facilities, um, that we have that have been neglected for a long time. Now, it's not to anybody's fault, but just always trying to keep that dollar down makes it so that we can't just go and resurface a clock face, or, um, like, all these things have to be looked at as special projects and, um,
Right.
you know, pu- push forward, like, on their own, like, that one thing, instead of just having a general town maintenance, uh, budget that's adequate, uh, to upkeep some of our more hist- historical sites and, um, so it'd be nice to get there, you know, someday, uh, where we're doing things for purpose and with intent, um, and projecting things out.
Yeah.
Uh, instead of just trying to, you know, s- getting by all the time, yeah.
Just trying, you're trying, you're trying to survive.
Yeah.
Right.
Good.
So.
But like you said before too, like, we're in the per- perfect storm right now, you know what I mean? The inflation's hitting everybody, including the town.
Yep. Alright, so that being said, uh, we could, uh, switch over to the town warrant to review that.
I think there may be one, one-year term, Jen's kinda looked into it for the planning board.
Okay.
Cause every year there should be two two-year terms and one one-year term for the planning board, so.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
There's three?
Yeah, cause the three-year terms are staggered. And then, last year, when I was town clerk, I made a mistake on the warrant, and the treasurer only had a one-year term, and it should've been a three-year term.
Okay.
So, this twenty twenty-three is gonna be a two-year term, to keep that rotation of the three years. I realized it after the ballot had already been printed, so I called the DRA and asked them, and she said, just to do in twenty twenty-three, do a two-year term for the treasurer. And the town clerk tax collector is normally a three-year term, but I had one more year, one term.
Yeah.
That expired in twenty-four, so this, that one year, and then in twenty twenty-four, that'll be a three-year term also.
So I thought the planning board was all three-year terms, and there's only just
Mm-hmm. There's one one-year term.
Hmm, that makes things interesting.
Can I have another one for us?
Yeah.
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Yay.
Cool, thanks for coming in.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Go to Applebee's.
Okay, safe for all your work.
Long haul.
Okay.
Thank you so much, guys, I love the hearing from you tomorrow.
You're welcome, thank you. Yep, I'll get more stuff up tomorrow.
We're just gonna whip that up.
Yep, pizza cake.
Alright.
Uh, I'll set it up for you when I just send comments, if you don't like the, the titles or anything, yeah.
Okay.
Can't change the data, but I can change the titles, alright.
Yep. Thank you so much, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care, honey.
So I don't, I put these people's names in there, just kind of as placeholders, but I don't know if all of these people are gonna run for those positions.
Gotcha.
Thank you so much for doing that, I really appreciate it. Um, I do have to put that, I didn't know if we're gonna make any changes tonight, so I didn't put that final budget number in here, but I will.
For what?
For article two for the budget.
That's this number in here?
Yep. Three one nine six two seven eight. Actually, two seven nine, we rounded up.
Three one nine six
Three one nine six two seven nine. And as far as the default budget, I looked at the past five years, and the last three years, the number was exactly the same. They made no adjustments to the budget from the previous year. So, the default budget would be the two eight eight four four six eight.
That's how the other
That's how the past three years have gone, I, I've had three phone calls and two emails into the DRA, but
Boards have handled it. No response.
She has yet to return my phone call. I'm assuming she's up to her eyeballs. And the block grants, right, the four and five, those never change, um.
So that block grant number?
That's correct.
Oh, so that's what they're projecting, the state's projecting, okay.
Yep. Yep. Um, article six, um, there's an email in here from Um, there's an email in here from Meredith, fire chief. Requesting that the contribution to the fire department capital reserve. Increases from fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand. And she also wants to increase the contribution to the fire protective equipment capital reserve to, from twenty thousand to thirty thousand.
Is there a reason for the um. For the fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand?
Um, there's a email in here with a packet.
Okay.
Due to significant in- increases in costs of products. I would like to request that we increase the contribution to the fire department capital reserve to seventy-five and increase the. Contribution to fire protective equipment to thirty thousand. And then she also wanted to propose a capital reserve coconut. We tripped around with her on that one, a coconut, what?
You alright?
Yeah. She wanted to create um a new capital reserve account for communication, for new communication equipment. Um, being proactive, so that's, she, you know, they just got all the new stuff, but they wanna, instead of having to come up with. Whatever that cost may be in ten years or fifteen years, she wants to start building that fund. To take the radios out of that as opposed to trying to put a big huge lump sum in a budget.
Yeah.
So, um, she was trying to be proactive, so I added that to the end, it's Article sixteen. But I have to look into more, cause all the other ones have R S As in them and she just kinda. She said, I don't know how to word it, but.
Yeah.
This is what I want, so I just kinda did it a little bit, but it needs to be um. I need to find the RSA on that one.
Okay.
For creating it.
We'll be looking at another. Twenty-five, thirty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't know if any of you have had anybody pull you aside and say, this is not the year.
No, I have, I have heard that a couple times, um.
To just be piling. And we are piling along, in my opinion.
As far as.
Just like new, you know, these. Um, the Heritage Commission. I don't know, wasn't there the transfer station? And then if we have another one. Fire department, that's an additional. Thirty-five thousand onto that, it's starting to get like.
Yeah. Yeah.
In my mind, it starts to feel a little bit overwhelming, like what are they, what are we doing here?
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Well, it's putting it for the voters, you know?
It is, and.
And you know, like I can agree with you, cause some of these things don't need to be started with twenty thousand dollars, you know, we could. Start them with less money just to get them on the books and.
Yep.
Um, then there'll be less impact this year, well, actually, next Nov- November, like next tax cycle, so.
So like the Heritage Commission, we could change it to.
Yeah, that one could go down. It could even go down to five thousand.
Five. Alright, we'll change that.
Yeah.
Same thing with the transfer station.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's really just to establish the fund, like those, yeah.
Okay.
I have friends watching, you can weigh in now.
Yeah.
Sorry, Chris. Alright, change those.
So you want to make the transfer station what?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
And the Heritage five thousand.
I know it doesn't, it does seem like a lot, or like I had said earlier, is we're trying to move from reacting to things. To planning for things.
Right.
So there's a whole different thought process, though I do understand the concerns.
Yeah, I am.
And it's unfortunate that what has happened over the last, you know, two years, and especially this year with inflation. And what's gonna continue to happen next year, like it's terrible that it's happening at the same time, but we still. Need to start thinking forward, um, and get out of this reactionary mode.
It's true.
Yeah.
And steps are definitely being taken and some might argue too many steps.
Yeah.
They might say, great, awesome, we're starting on the right path, but if we put too much.
Yep.
Then it. We run that risk.
No, I do.
And, and you know. That all of these articles that follow the budget article weigh heavily. How they vote on the budget article. So people look at the whole thing, they're like, they're like, that's increased, that's increased, this is increased, that's increased.
Really?
Budget's increased, well, I'm going default on the budget.
I've never done one of those.
Yeah, I don't know why you'd vote for warrant articles in the default, but like the core budget, cause the budget is what.
Right.
The town operates on, yeah.
I'm not saying that it makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm saying when there's a lot of extras in there.
Mm-hmm.
That it just sets the tone.
Yeah. Yep.
Of. People feel like they're being asked too much.
Yeah.
But it may not be, you know, I've talked to other people who said. There's no way that budget's going default, people are happy, so you get it from both sides.
Yeah.
You know?
Question, on the fire department. Um, the, what they wanna put aside for, for radios in the future, was that that twenty thousand dollar room?
Does the extra warrant article at the end?
Number sixteen.
Okay, still, still the one. So that's the one we just reduced down to, um.
No. We didn't touch that one. Article sixteen at the end.
I don't think we did.
Fourteen and fifteen were both brought down to five thousand, sixteen. Should stay at ten thousand, cause I believe that uh Meredith's thinking about like a ten-year.
Communication.
Right.
Program and ten thousand is not even enough, as you guys remember, it took, yeah, almost two hundred thousand dollars, uh, was it a hundred?
Like a half. Right.
Yeah, but those radios also lasted, what, twenty-five, thirty years?
Oh. Not, yes and no. We're lucky that there wasn't any issues, in my opinion, um, like to run things down, yeah.
Oh, I, I agree. I agree with that, but the whole thing there is that it did last, you know, they, they outlasted.
Yeah.
What people thought was going to be their usable lifetime.
So even with that, so they cost, I think, the total cost.
Right.
Is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I think, so even at twenty years, so if you project out twenty years. The cost is gonna be much higher than two hundred thousand dollars of what we'll have saved if we stay at that ten thousand dollar level for twenty years.
And if they're making those radios like they make every, any other thing nowadays. Refrigerators used to last twenty-five, thirty years, now you're lucky to get ten out of it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, the cost, three times as much, yeah.
Things aren't made, right, and, and things aren't made like they used to. Um, so did you guys wanna? Increase those two lines that she requested, or do you wanna leave it? Or do you wanna see what happens at the deliberative, I don't know.
Yeah, it's really tough, I think, um, it would probably be best to be done at the deliberative session.
Got it?
Yeah, they have, Meredith proposed it at deliberative, um, so we can put it to vote right there.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Um, and that's not giving her a hard time, I know that's how that's been perceived in the past.
No. Right.
But that's, you know, a point in time where the people that are in the room, you know, they will take the consensus of more than just.
What the voters just said.
Uh, three people.
Yep. I mean, it was fine, it worked out fine for her last time.
Yeah.
When she did it.
Cause really in those lines, um. They should be increased, uh, cause with some of their, those equipment. We're not keeping pace.
Right, I know. And kudos for trying to be proactive too. You know, instead of reactive.
What I don't wanna get down to is a point in time where someone says, oh, didn't they consider this, or nobody. You know, thought that we need a six hundred thousand dollar replacement truck at some point, and we have no money for it, cause then that'd be a huge bump.
Right.
And like the budget.
Yep. Right.
So we're trying to avoid, um, trying to create a nice smooth road going forward. Something predictable.
Yeah, I was just thinking add that for um, the radios, since they are, they've already purch- purchased new ones. If we could start this off at um, twenty-five hundred dollars less and then each successive year increase it. Um, the amount that gets put in, so that we target what we think it's going to be twenty years from now, or ten years from now.
Mm-hmm.
Like I, you know, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, um, Jason's right, we're hitting the taxpayers with a lot of requests. And if we can just reduce that somewhat and just, you know, annually increase it a little bit. Um, that it would make more sense.
Mm-hmm.
Especially since we know it's a long-term, or we hope we know, that it's a, a long-term project.
Yeah. Yeah, planning board's working on uh C I P and it sounds like getting together and like a work group session. Um, to start really trying to get that overhauled, um, so that'll be a functioning piece of this whole. Um, this whole thing for uh next year and going forward and we'll know exactly from the departments. You know, what their projected large expenses are gonna be uh for the next five to ten years.
Did we ever make a decision about the clean hazardous waste?
Yeah, I think we said yeah.
Okay. I don't know what we're talking about saying.
So I know that she would, you know, I understand her reasoning for the ten thousand, um. But do you think we should just move that down to five too, just to establish that fund?
And then increase it next year or whatever?
Yeah, based off of, I hate doing any of these increases without having a current C I P that, you know, has the department's.
I know.
Heads yearly review on, um. Cause last year I was a no on a lot of it, just on that basis.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I think that.
I would say seventy-five hundred.
Wouldn't that be okay with five?
You'd be okay with five, then?
Yeah, let's just push it down to five.
Okay.
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 So now that three of them are less.
Instead of fifty thousand, it's fifteen thousand.
Yeah. Well, sometimes I wonder if people really realize that all. The warrant articles, there's so much that gets voted on and put in through warrant that they, you know, the community will add. One point two million to the budget just in warrant articles, yeah, yeah.
I know, I know, it's weird.
Mm-hmm.
So I do understand what you had said earlier.
Yeah.
You know? Cause it'll be.
And there are those who actually look at all of them and add it all up and say.
Yep.
So, and just out of a point of interest, when I read Article Ten every year that I've. Lived in this town and voted on it. Article Ten says to see if the town will raise and vote to raise and appropriate twenty thousand, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. For the per, yeah, four hundred and forty dollars for the purpose of year, now this is year four of the cyclical, cyclical revale. In talking to the trustees of the trust fund, that's just giving them permission to spend the money that was raised the previous year. To pay for the cyclical revales.
Right.
I thought it was raising another twenty thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
No, it's just enough to pay for that.
It's, it's to spend it, it's not to raise it.
Okay, good, alright.
So it's that wording should be to expend.
That's what I said.
And authorize.
It does say it.
But you'll also find.
It says to raise and appropriate, so I'm thinking.
But, and so it does.
It doesn't.
We are raising and appropriating this.
It's already been raised.
It's, it's already been raised and it's in Article Six.
Appropriated.
For a different amount.
Ah.
For thirty thousand dollars.
So it really should just say authorize the withdrawal, and is that even necessary?
So.
To have the vote, voters.
I don't think so.
Voting that every year.
Cause the selectmen are the agents to expend, so why do we have to ask for permission to spend it again?
Are you certain on that?
That's what Benty and Jim Cockney said. Cause I questioned it, like why is this?
Cause the last time we asked for, like to know who the agents to expend were, I didn't know that we got any.
A couple of things we know.
Yeah.
That was one of them.
Alright.
So, um. Like I, like I said, I always thought this was raising another twenty thousand dollars. But it, it isn't, that's what I sent to him, I'm like, it doesn't make sense, why do they say raise and appropriate?
Well, it's certainly worded, it's worded.
Cause, and Jim said because they're raising and appropriating the money from the fund that was already raised and appropriated. I'm like, why can't you, why don't, why either A, take it out, or B, why can't you just say, can we spend this money? That you already voted for last year.
Vote to contract. That you have with the revaluation or evaluation company.
But it doesn't have to. Yeah, but that's, or that's.
She's talking about the wording specifically.
So you're oblig- you're obligated to it anyway. Now, if I remember correctly.
Right. But we don't have to have the warrant article to ask to spend it, we're not raising more money, cause that's already in Article Six.
There's thirty thousand being raised.
Right, so every year we raise and appropriate thirty thousand for the revale. But every year for the past two or maybe three years, we've had this article in there asking to spend it.
Is that all it's been, is the past?
Well, this is the.
Yeah, so it hasn't been in there for a long time.
Isn't the revale. Done once every five years?
Yes.
Okay, so what you're doing is you're raising thirty thousand dollars for, the, that revale obviously costs a hundred and fifty thousand.
No.
No, there's annual costs of twenty thousand, four hundred and forty for four years, and then you need, what is it, thirty-five thousand or thirty-eight thousand for the fifth year, yeah.
For the fifth, for the fifth year, yeah.
Right, so every year they do cyclical revaluations, but the, the fifth year is the big year when they go through the whole time.
Oh, okay.
And do the whole thing, but Article Ten is just asking for permission to spend the money that was raised last year. We're not, we're not raising another twenty thousand dollars.
Well, for agents to expend, then that doesn't even need to be there, cause it's already, it's already been raised.
It seems like stupid. Right.
Yeah.
And did you look if there's any R S As dictating?
So.
No, it was never in there before, like when I was working for land use, it was never in there, I don't know where this came from.
Oh.
Why is, why are we, cause first I thought, why are we raising thirty thousand over here and twenty thousand, four hundred and forty over here? We're double.
Yeah.
Raising and appropriating, and so I asked the trustees and that's what they told me, that it's not. You're not raising and appropriating, you're just basically asking to spend the money, and I'm like, well, that, as a voter. And working at the town, that's not how I read that.
Yeah, no, I was here for that conversation, but I didn't, I don't recall in that conversation that, them stating that.
It's, it's asking, yeah.
Uh, the select board was the agents to expend, though it would make sense because it's a yearly expense.
But regardless of who the agent to expend is?
Well, if we're not the agent to expend, then it needs to be in this warrant, but just worded differently.
Well, isn't that the, isn't that when the spending is the appropriate? Portion of that, uh.
Right.
Yeah, but so like right where the and is, authorize the withdrawal of that from the revali-.
The ratio.
Twenty thousand, four forty from the revaluation fund created for that purpose. Yeah, but so like right where the and is authorize the withdrawal of that from the reva- twenty thousand four forty from the revaluation fund created for that purpose.
Mm-hmm.
That is the statement, not a statement that leads you to think that it's an additional twenty thousand dollars that we're asking for.
Right. But when we raise it on an Article six, it says to raise and appropriate.
Aye.
So that's already asking to send it, send, spend it.
The warrant probably passed. Yeah, yeah. So either we are agents to expand and we can omit Article ten or we aren't agents to expand and we need um, the legislative vote. Um, maybe we just need to reword that, so it's not so.
See, I don't even think that's the case, because Article six already says raise and appropriate.
Um.
When when we're, when we're raising it for the capital reserve fund.
So like there's also in Article six, there's there's money for the Parks and Rec Department.
Right.
But in order for there to be an expenditure out of that fund, we need to put it out in the warrant. Like it goes back to the legislative body to expend it for a specific purpose.
Would it be worded that same way, raise and appropriate?
No, no, it's just to authorize the expenditure of, I think it was ten thousand dollars to.
Yeah. To resurface the tennis court, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hmm.
Anyway, can you give um, uh, M H N A legal counsel a call in and uh, bring the point up?
It was weird. Yeah.
And see what they have to say about it?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of skipping around on this warrant, but I would like to um, make sure that we address the recommended by selectmen on every article.
Hmm.
And have it be an actual vote.
Okay.
Uh, cause I think last time it's been kinda just extrapolated from conversations and have it all on paper.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Did you have any specific questions or comments?
No, just listening.
Okay.
You got the cameras on autopilot, huh?
Yeah, I think Debbie has a question.
What?
Debbie?
I don't have a question.
Debbie, come on in.
Oh, that's Deb.
Deb, oh, who?
Deb.
Yeah, Deb. If you have a question.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, did you wanna take it?
Yeah.
Outside or?
Okay. Perfect, awesome, thank you.
Alright. So, we'll read through the warrant, alright?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, and we'll correct the votes. I'm gonna correct this number table.
Yeah. Want it?
I got it right here, a piece of paper.
On that article two fifty.
Mm-hmm.
With our encumbrances and and then, actually not, not encumbrances, but contracts and whatever.
That.
Is this default number of last year's budget enough to cover?
So, like I said, I've had several calls over the past two weeks into the D R A to see what we can can, you know, what we can add to that.
Yeah.
And she has not returned my call, so.
So we just run with it? And if it doesn't?
But it, and it's hard and one of the reasons that we're double checking was that there was another um, budgeting article that I was reading, um, where they did state that even if it went to default, we would be able to cover all the fuel expense, like all of those things get added into the default budget. Uh, cause you can't not have those items.
So then this number wouldn't be accurate.
That's why I was calling to find out, can we add those things? Into that.
But w- if we were to, would we use that um, number that the finance advisory committee gave us? That three percent? No, no, not three percent. You know that the table that I'm talking about where.
I would have.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I would have to go in on each of those line items that are like electricity, fuel, salt. Like we have quote unquote contracts for, I mean, we have to have electricity, it's not like a written contract, but can't run the town if you don't have it. So like, can we, can we add that into the default budget?
That's just.
Can we add the contract for salt? Because it's doubled in price, even though we signed that contract after the vote last March.
Hmm.
Like those type of things, cause I, like, I I mean, originally we were told you can't do that, we saw that, right?
Yeah.
But
But then now you're thinking maybe you.
Some people, some people are doing it, sometimes.
Yeah, and there's other communities that are
They're like, yeah, they're.
having that as a part of the default budget, I'm not saying that that's the right thing.
Right.
It just, it makes it more confusing, cause we thought we had to take all those out and go back to, you know, twenty twenty two.
Just the flat numbers that were voted on in twenty twenty two.
Yeah. Yeah.
So are we happy with going with twenty twenty two for default?
We have to at this point.
Alright.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so that will be shall the town raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately. The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling three million one hun- hundred and ninety six thousand two hundred and seventy nine dollars. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be two million eight hundred and eighty four thousand four hundred and sixty eight dollars. Which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty thirteen X and X V I to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. So um.
So, if I do get in touch with her by the end of the week before the budget hearing and that number, that number would only increase the default budget, it would not decrease.
Mm-hmm.
Can I send out an email letting you guys know this is what she said we could do? So I'll change that number to whatever it is.
We can revise it next week, cause this is, this is gonna be, yeah, yeah, yeah.
As the budget hearing. Okay. Okay, so recommended?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
What's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Article number three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to one hundred and s- and six thousand two hundred sixty seven dollars for maintenance construction, reconstruction of New Upswitch roads to be offset by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation block grant. No amount to be raised through taxation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to maintain reconstruction and paved New Upswitch roads. This will be a non-lapsing appropriation for a period of five years, terminating on December thirty first twenty twenty six, or when the project is completed, whichever comes sooner in accordance with RSA thirty two seven six. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Article five. Uh, same wording, two hundred and fifty thousand. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Article six, fund capital reserves and expendable trust to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred eighty eight thousand five hundred dollars to be contributed to previously established capital reserve and expendable trust as follows. Highway department expendable capital reserve fund ninety five thousand dollars, fire department capital reserve fund fifty thousand dollars, pool maintenance capital reserve fund six thousand dollars, parks and rec uh, capital reserve fund twenty five hundred dollars. Police department expendable capital reserve fund fifty thousand. Revaluation capital reserve fund thirty thousand. Building maintenance expendable trust thirty five thousand. Fire protection equipment capital reserve fund twenty thousand. All in favor? Aye.
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 Did anyone do the arithmetic on that?
What's that?
Did anyone do the arithmetic on that for the total?
No, no.
Double check it.
I hope it's right. It was copied from last year, so.
Yeah.
Article seven, for the library, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars to support the New Upswitch library. All in favor? Aye.
Did Boo say aye? I can't hear it.
No, alright, Jason said aye.
Oh, did he? Okay, aye.
Why are you waiting for him?
I was waiting for him.
Article eight, the ambulance service, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to, for the contracted licensed ambulance service, emergency services and support. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Region, article number nine, regional health services. To see if the town, you didn't copy and paste this one, did you?
No, these are all new ones.
These are those changes, alright, cool. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars for the purpose of funding the following regional health services that assist New Upsw- New Upswitch residents. Manadok Center for Violence Prevention, a hundred and twenty dollars. Meals on Wheels, thirteen hundred dollars. Court-appointed Special Advocates for Children, five hundred dollars. Hundred Night Shelter, five hundred dollars. Saint Vincent de Paul Food Pantry, three thousand dollars. The River Center, five hundred dollars. Granite State Children's Alliance, three hundred dollars. Community Volunteer Transportation Company, two hundred and fifty dollars. Manadok Family Services, five hundred dollars. Home Healthcare Hospice and Community Services, fifteen hundred dollars. Shelter from the storm, one thousand dollars. And Harbor Care, five hundred dollars. All in favor? Aye.
Nay.
What?
I'll tell you, uh, this past week and the week before we pointed out how some of these um, charities are joining in and raising their arms in the culture war. This um, new thing that's being pushed on our culture.
Okay, alright, so you're a no vote?
And I've, I have found three of them now on this list who are openly advocating for changing the culture, um, and it really leads me to think if this is how it's gonna be and they're taking sides in a partisan issue, then maybe we don't go down this road.
Hmm.
Or do we start adding others that may be partisan, like in their foundation? Like for instance, should we put Right to Life? Which would be a health service.
Yeah.
Would you be okay with it?
We haven't received a request, you know, for funding and I don't know that that charity serves any of our residents or not. Um, I understand what you're saying, um, and you're a part of making this list, um, so it would've been good to have that information ahead of time.
It was, it was brought up during the making of the list.
Yeah.
Now, just like with ARPA, when I was against it.
Yeah.
I was rebuked by one of the residents who said, just because you're against it, doesn't mean you don't weigh in on it. Right? So on the expenditure of the funds.
Yeah.
Even though you're gonna vote against it. I view this as the same way.
Ah, okay, yeah.
If there's a list.
Okay.
Um, but I think it is a serious issue that we're facing
So.
as a town and when things get political, what do we do? So right now, yeah, a big motivation is the side that they're choosing.
Cause I believe there was one that was specifically taken off, right?
There was.
Yeah, for that very reason.
Partially.
Yeah.
So ideally, this would've been a list that all of us could've supported, but I understand where you're coming from on that.
Well, and and the thing is, is it's not something you would expect.
Yeah.
From a charity, and so it was kinda blindsided. Like, whoa, what is this?
Yeah.
And now, in the, in the past few weeks, there was two others that popped up.
Alright, well, I I support this list as written, uh, Jason is a no vote, Lou?
Um, I support the list.
Okay.
And to throw my two cents in, if it saves the life of one child or one family, it's worth it.
So next year we should add Right to Life?
Well, even any one of these could easily save um, the life of a family.
And really, we're, we are kinda stingy with it, it's not at all really about the money.
Yeah.
But in in my mind, it's more the principle of it. Because we are funding a political movement now through some of these organizations.
In that case, then um, in the future, we might think about a way of
Revise the list.
Of revising the list or uh, getting input from a committee of residents.
Hmm.
And to get their determination on it.
Yeah.
Well, if we're gonna get the full community's determination.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, but no, you're not.
Well, revise the list to only include those who do not put forth political, they're there for the charity, they're there for the good of the people. They're not trying to push an agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That would be.
And just because you're a no vote now, doesn't mean that this list can't be revised, um.
Hi, how are you?
Evening.
Good evening.
Um.
Hello, Willie.
Yeah.
Well, it may be.
Yeah.
In which case I would probably change my vote, because I, I do think there's some good charities on here.
Yeah.
But again, fundamentally, do we use public money to support charities? That's a, that's a whole nother question.
Well, the community has voted to do so, so.
They have, because, but if you think about it, who's gonna say no besides me? Right? Because you just look like a real jerk. You don't like charities, but, you know.
Uh, there's other people that say no, I'm sure I looked like plenty of a jerk last year saying no to the increase in the capital reserve accounts but it was on the basis of not having backup and support for it. You know, so you have a reason for uh, that vote and
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense. Um, so Article ten. Are we leaving it in or taking it out?
I have to find out.
So you're not sure? Okay. Alright, so we're gonna leave that as written now, I'm not gonna put the vote, was that really the only one that you wanted to?
That's the only one I had a question on.
Were there any of the other ones that you don't support? So we kinda moved this along.
There wasn't.
Alright, Lou, is there anything else that you don't support? Cause we're gonna read through this all uh, next week.
I believe that household hazardous waste, I don't know that we can have come up with any alternative, but I don't think it's being used.
It is, people, you, we get numbers, don't we? I feel like it's not high use, but there is use of it, um.
And it is three thousand.
Yeah, so we do get feedback from them.
Do we do get feed- feedback from them on it?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it should've been a part of the letter.
Okay. I've never seen the numbers.
Hmm.
Yeah, like right in that letter from the, from them.
Oh, maybe.
They have numbers in it.
Yeah, so I got two letters, one that they were requesting like sixty-seven hundred dollars, and then a few days later I got a another one, um, for like three grand. So I put a call into them, hey, which one's right, cause and then I looked at last year's and it was three grand.
Did they ever give you numbers of how many people took part in it?
Possibly, I didn't read the whole one, I was just asking.
So we're not sharing that number?
Correct.
Oh, I didn't hear back from you, okay.
No. I need to follow up and call them because that's.
Do we run a holdup on that one?
Yeah, I'm not going through anymore of this list.
Okay.
So basically it's three to zero, I just support all the other ones, is that what you were kind of getting at?
Well.
We're not gonna finish.
We'll finish it next week when there's like all the
pieces.
Yeah, all the pieces are put into it.
Alright.
Yeah.
Regarding the budget.
Yeah. Okay.
Do, do we have a revenue?
I said after revenue.
Did you cheat it?
Maybe I'm, maybe it only included a question for the financials and.
No. Budget's uh Can I do that piece again? Hello, guys? Long time no see, how you been?
Very good.
Hmm. That's all. Um, so as a part of old new business, I just wanted to let uh the board know that the fire department's going to be pursuing another A F G grant, um. So the association voted to hire and pay for a grant writer to assist uh the fire department in the process of acquiring assistance to firefighters grant. Um, Lieutenant Valencourt will be working with the grant writer and will be the point of contact. Uh, the estimated request is gonna be in between seventy and eighty thousand dollars, and the grant has a five percent matching requirement. Um, and their hope that we would s- support them as they pursue another grant to help um alleviate the tax burden.
Did they state what, how they're going to help alleviate the tax burden? I mean, is it specific to?
Cause it's seventy to eighty thousand dollars that we're not gonna have to ask community for, like in tax dollars.
I understand, but for what equipment?
Um. That, I cannot remember offhand what it was.
It's not stated in documentation.
No, no, but they are going through that process, I'd look for that, and I can ask Meredith.
So this is, this is a notification that they are hiring a grant writer.
Yeah, it it's not gonna, it's gonna come out of the the fire associations.
For the association.
Oh, not the fire department.
Not the fire department, it has nothing to do with, yeah, yeah, just the fact that they're pursuing another grant
Yeah. Yeah, quite nice.
um to help alleviate some tax burden. Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't remember what that, what it was for.
Yeah, I'm just curious as if it's to uh some of the equipment that's already being asked for on um on the budget or it's part of uh supplementing the cost of the radios.
No, 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 it's it's its own thing, I think it has something to do with um.
Don't worry about it right now.
The air, air, oh, I do remember now, thank you Lou for asking a little bit more. I think it's increasing the capacity of the current tanks that they have from a certain amount, and it's gonna increase it about thirty percent, I think.
Twenty percent or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, so then they'll have bigger air packs.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what that was.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
So that's not even stated out in the budget now, under courtment anyway?
No, 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 it was just something, um, that would be good for them to have, it's not a necessity.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah. I know, so. Alright. And Jason, do you have anything on their old new before you went to non-public?
No.
Lou?
I did, but I can't remember everything.
Alright. Um, and then this is, uh just to remind everybody that's watching, uh that we will be holding a public hearing on the budget uh next Tuesday, uh January fourteenth at seven P M right here in the town office.
And then are we having the auction?
Oh, yes, and the auction's actually this Saturday, um. We're auctioning off uh three properties, and registration begins at nine, and the auction will start promptly at ten A M. And that auction will be held right here in the town office as well, right in this room.
I just remembered my old business, uh Debbie, I got a um email saying.
You're all set, FirstNet?
Yeah, and it says that they're changing me over to the police department.
Good. They set up the account wrong. It's no, you're not getting changed over to the police department, it's just the umbrella that it's, the whole town is under.
Oh, okay.
Anyone who's getting FirstNet.
Okay.
So you're all set.
Yeah, cause when I went ahead and told it to change, cause it told me to go to a specific website and approve that that change.
Yeah.
Um, it said that it couldn't do it.
Yeah, cause I have to approve.
Oh, okay.
It approv- you approved the transfer, then I get an email and I have to approve you getting it.
This is A T and T.
That you're eligible.
Okay, well, it came back saying that it couldn't, it couldn't take on my school.
Yeah, that that person's under.
Don't worry about it.
I got, I got the email, it just wasn't on the website yet, so.
Priorities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, good?
I'm good.
Alright.
I just couldn't understand why I'm going from the select board over to the police department. Yeah, you guys have built in a new jail cell.
And there's no cell reception.
And there's no cell reception.
Alright, uh with that, um I'd like to thank everybody for tuning in, uh we're gonna move into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three two uh for some legal discussions.